And before we get launched, Councilman Vaccaro is going to lead us in the pledge.
Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoops. All right, Mr. City Manager, I'll let you take it from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. All right, so for tonight's study session, we have one item of discussion, which is discussion and direction regarding the general plan update land uses in Cordelia. As you know, oops, I see.
We need to do public comments first.
Yeah.
Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time.
It's okay.
The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. I have five individuals online, but I don't see any hands raised. And Madam Mayor, I have seven speaker cards, but all are for Agenda Item 1. So I have no public speakers at this time. Does anyone want to speak? All right.
All right, we'll go ahead with the presentation there.
All right, yeah, thank you. So the one item is discussion and direction regarding general plan update land uses, particularly in specific to Cordelia. And so I think we've had four or five of these sessions at this point, as well as a couple of joint sessions with the Planning Commission as we've been looking at the general plan update now for the last couple of years. And I will now turn it over to Allison or Dave Feinstein to set this up, and then we'll hear a presentation from Allison.
Yeah, I think David gave a basic introduction to the item. As with the other study sessions on this item, our general plan consultant, Dattin Vatia, has been helping us and leading us with this process. And so tonight, a familiar face for you, Allison Moore, will be, will be leading the presentation. We also have Rajiv Vatia, who will be at the dais as well to help with any discussion and questions.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and council members. We'll, as Dave mentioned, we'll continue to build on discussion from June 13th, focusing on a long-term vision for Cordelia, where we'll include discussion of multiple, multiple components of what will help to create a balanced neighborhood. And then finally, we'll seek to confirm final direction for the Sassoon Valley. So we are currently in the phase of the Fairfield Forward Project, where we are defining the big picture for various areas of Fairfield that reflects community members' vision. This evening, we're focusing on land use, number of homes, and job opportunities. Decisions regarding where these components are located and how they interact with each other have significant implications for the overall functionality and livability of a city. Knowing how much of something and where it will go will help to inform the next phase of the project, which we will bring back to you later in the fall, where the city will identify what improvements, facilities, and amenities, including schools, parks, and improvements are needed, so that those improvements will come to you in the next session. So over the past two years, we've heard Fairfield and Cordelia residents share their vision for the future of their community. Key themes include a desire for more grocery stores and shopping options, worries about school capacity, especially at Nelda Monday, a need for additional parks on the north side of Interstate 80, and traffic issues, particularly congestion at the Business Center Drive and Green Valley Road intersection. Cordelia also faces challenges, traveling, or, community members face challenges traveling between North and South Cordelia to access these groceries and schools. Lastly, residents point out undesirable piecemeal development along Business Center Drive, which has led to incompatible land uses like warehouses next to housing, offices, and hotels. Simultaneously, the city has been receiving requests from property owners to change their land use and zoning designations, particularly to build housing. As such, a defined vision is needed to ensure that there is a proactive plan for Cordelia. To help frame the direction for this big-picture vision, we'll be asking the following questions of you this evening. Where is best to locate a new grocery store? And how much housing should be added to support the type of grocery store that you feel is best? The city has received a number of requests for additional housing. How much should be added? Where should it go? What is the direction for housing in Cordelia? Generally, what types of employment and/or retail uses do you want to see? And we'll get into some more specific questions later on. So first, we'll turn our attention to grocery stores. So currently in Cordelia, there is a Safeway and a Costco north of I-80, and no major stores south. Other grocery options and better access to these are important community-identified needs. At the prior study session, we received direction to study the factors that go into grocery store location decisions, and analyze which of two sites might be a better location for that. Economic consultants, BAE, Matt Cauter is here this evening to answer any questions about the demand evaluation report that they produced. They created this to analyze demand for a new grocery store in the Cordelia area. Current housing demogra, or, current housing development demographics indicate that these two stores already serve most of the demand, with a small excess of demand for a third store. The study concludes that currently planned or approved housing would result in demand for roughly .58 of a new full-size grocery store, full-size meaning of the size of a Safeway or a Rayleigh's. Current pipeline development may result in future demands that may be sufficient to attract a smaller grocer, however, such as Sprouts, though not a Trader Joe's, as there is already a store in Central Fairfield. So to support a new full-size, full-service grocery store, approximately 2,100 additional housing units would be required beyond planned and approved units. Thus, the Cordelia area is likely only to attract one more grocery store in the long term. That would either be a smaller store, if no additional housing is planned, or a full-size store, if there is a substantial increase in planned housing as part of the, the general plan. The team also evaluated the viability of two sites south of I-80 to improve access to this area. Number three, Red Top Low, or, sorry, Red Top and Lopes Road, and the other at Red Top and I-80. So two is Red Top and Lopes, three is Red Top and I-80. While both of these sites are large enough, and the interchange improvements that are planned for the future would improve access from north of I-80, the interchange reconfiguration could potentially reduce the developable area of Red Top and Lopes significantly. And as such, Site 3 in, in the memo was determined to be the more appropriate site as part of that analysis. So this one right here. So we can come back to these questions. But would there be support for additional housing to support a full-service grocery store? Or would you feel that a smaller one would be sufficient? What site should be identified for the location of said grocery store? Or do you feel it is better to let the market decide for areas that are currently zoned for commercial, either north or south? So I can either pause here?
I'm gonna, I know that we like to hear from our citizens first before we get into this, but I do have one specific question.
Sure.
When you talk about 21 additional housing sites, could that also be apartments? So, housing units, in other words, so not sprawly so much as.
High density.
Yeah, high density.
That's right, it's 200, 2,100 more housing units, not, not.
And that's on top of what's already planned for there?
To get to a full-service grocery store, yes.
Alrighty then, okay. All right, thank you.
So would you prefer that I carry on with the presentation? Okay, sure thing. Okay, so our next major area for direction is the future of housing in Cordelia. There are three factors that drive the need for additional housing, and that will inform our discussion. First is the existing and future housing elements in Fairfield, so making sure that we have adequate sites to meet the current housing number that is allocated to Fairfield, and making sure that we're tracking development of current housing element sites for our current element. And then also making sure that we have sufficient housing densities that can accommodate lower-income housing in the future with those future housing elements. The second is our discussion and decisions around housing to support a grocery store, if that is the direction. And then third, several property owner requests for annexation or redesignation that we are hoping for direction on. So staff has received a number of requests from property owners interested in housing. As I present these, I want to emphasize that these are requests from property owners, not staff recommendations, and that there may be trade-offs if they are redesignated for availability of other non-residential land that is available. Staff has estimated that the number of units that might result from redesignation, based on developable acreage, existing site plans, and environmental constraints. Any and all of these sites can be chosen, some can be left out. But in total, staff estimates that the number of units resulting from these sites could potentially be 1,215 to 1,730 units. So Site Number 1 is known as the Ferrari Site. This approximately 16-acre site is within city limits and just north of I-80, adjacent to Red Top Road. It's currently zoned agricultural and commercial. And the property owners have requested that they be permitted to expand the existing dairy and permit housing. Because this is where Business Center Drive will connect to Red Top Road in the future as part of the interchange project, STA improvements may require the city to acquire a portion of the property owner's lands. Sites 2 and 3 are known as the Mangels and Dittmer Properties. Together, they are about 580 acres in total. They're currently located in the unincorporated county and have requested annexation. These parcels are constrained by steep slopes and are also underlaid by a fault line. But together, redesignation could support 275 to 550 units. Site 6 is known as the Garaventa Site. It's about 40 acres at the intersection of Sassoon Valley Road and Business Center Drive, and it's currently zoned for commercial. Currently, there's a proposal for 218 single-family homes and a commercial component that would include a strip mall with fast food and a gas station. Because of this parcel's proximity to the Sassoon Valley, staff would recommend that policies for this parcel, particularly the commercial component, emphasize a higher-quality lifestyle center and gateway with experiential retail, entertainment, lodging, and recreation opportunities, with more of that nod towards agritourism opportunities in Sassoon Valley. And staff would also recommend either mixed-use or more dense housing than a single-family product on this site. Site 7, Nelson Hill, is adjacent to Fairfield south of I-80 and is currently unincorporated. Currently, there's an existing quarry, and if the site were to be redesignated, a reclamation plan must be prepared. Nelson Hill is currently defined as a special study area in the existing general plan, with some type of housing previously envisioned. Now, property owners have requested annexation and have proposed up to 450 housing units with 152 acres reserved for open space. Most of the housing would occur inside the bowl of the hill and would not be visible from the hillside. And this area would likely require access planning, which is a concern voiced by the county that I'll mention a little bit later. Sites 10 and 11 are currently vacant, located at Red Top and Lopes Road. Site 10 is zoned industrial business park, and Site 11 is zoned office commercial. You'll recall that these were, some of the sites analyzed for a potential grocery store location. But as described earlier, the interchange project could affect developable acreage of these sites. The property owner who owns both would like to see a medium-density housing, and staff anticipates this could be approximately 220 to 270 units. Finally, Site 12 is just west of Red Top Road, currently zoned for high-density residential. This site has already been approved for a project, and thus has been included as part of the pipeline development for Fairfield's housing element. It's, it was approved at 378 units, counted towards Fairfield's above-moderate income allocation. The property owner now seeks to down, to downzone or permit lower or medium-density housing, which would change the projected capacity to 160 to 200 units. The, the state's No Net Loss Law requires that Fairfield have adequate sites in its inventory to accommodate its RENA at all income levels, and that the city track which projects are developed below what the projected capacity was. And while this project in and of itself would not reduce Fairfield's above-moderate income capacity below its allocated RENA number for that, reduction of projected units generally could mean that in the future Fairfield may need to identify other sites and prove that it has enough sites to accommodate that RENA number in the future. So the questions for these, would you like to see any of these sites redesignated to allow for housing? Can you think of any other sites that should be redesignated in Cordelia? Are there any areas that should be densified? For, in a mixed-use configuration? So next, any questions for that section?
I have quite a few, Mayor, but I'll just wait till the presentations over and wait till the public comments come.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, and then the final section for Cordelia are employment uses. So earlier on in this project, Alternatives for Cordelia presented several employment options, particularly along Business Center Drive. And now there is an opportunity to further refine council's vision for what this area should look like, if there's a role for housing along Business Center Drive in this area, and how employment uses in Cordelia can help to balance the, the housing and employed residents number. There are lots of different kinds of jobs that could be supported in this area. Staff recommends allowing for a mix of jobs-dense uses that could include craft, food, and beverage manufacturing, incubator or maker mixed-use, medical office, and potentially research and development or green technology, as well as any other job types that you might want to recommend. Housing could be permitted conditionally in, in certain areas, meaning that it would still need approval later on. But just to kind of run through some of the potential uses, so food and beverage could include breweries, artisan foods, that generally wouldn't, might include some kind of processing, but also a consumer orientation as well. This could build on Fairfield's existing strengths and its leadership in the, in food and beverage and the clusters that it already has. A utility study would likely be needed to see if Cordelia could support this kind of use, especially north of I-80. So maker or incubator flex spaces are the, a kind of building that's designed in such a way that can accommodate the needs of a growing business or a business that has manufacturing needs or other types of arrangements. And the design usually combines a flexibly divisible floor plan with common area amenities and higher ceiling heights. There are also a few variations on what flex mixed-use could look like. It could include office, commercial, and industrial flex uses. And one example of this in Fairfield is the Venture Commerce Center, which represents office and industrial flex space. And here, the tenants own their, their own units here. This is just an example of what, what that looks like. Another potential use that could see an increased demand in the future is medical office, especially as Fairfield's aging population continues to grow. And while the future of office is still kind of tenuous in, in, in wake of COVID, increasing return-to-work requirements and other market changes could mean that office rebounds in different ways. Finally, demand for life sciences and research and development space has increased significantly in the Bay Area. And while Fairfield could position itself to capture some of that demand, it may face competition from other cities like Vacaville or others where there's already an established cluster. Green tech, however, could be a viable opportunity, and the variety of jobs for that could range from office and administrative positions to more manufacturing positions. And we'd like to hear from you what types of industries and businesses you'd like to see in the area. And then we can craft policies to help Fairfield achieve that longer-term vision. In addition to these business uses that I described, we also want to know if you see a role for housing, which could be limited to certain areas. There are also options for housing as a by-right use or a conditional use, as I mentioned before. And so we, we'd want to hear your input on that. And then the role of commercial development in Cordelia north of I-80 is something that I had started to touch on in describing the Garaventa Site. I've noted that it's staff's recommendation that the commercial component for this site include higher-end destination retail that can serve as a gateway to Sassoon Valley instead of strip malls and gas stations focusing on restaurants, entertainment, and lodging. And then there's also the role of warehousing in this area. With the rise of e-commerce, demand for logistics and warehousing is a quickly growing and in-demand use. in-demand use, and Cordelia has seen development of a few of these buildings in the past few years, which has prompted concerns from the community about the compatibility of these uses with surrounding neighborhoods. Heavier industry is currently permitted and is in existing use between 80 and 680 to the south here. Does your vision of Cordelia include warehousing as an employment use, particularly along Business Center Drive? Or is there another part of Cordelia where you feel that those uses would be better served? And then, you know, I've described a number of different employment uses, and that one way that we can create a more nuanced employment-related development pattern is a refined zoning code, where we can differentiate between warehouse uses and non-warehouse uses in different parts of Cordelia. Currently, there are only three industrial land use zoning categories, but that refinement means that we can better define the types of buildings and uses that might be a better fit for what you envision. So to recap our employment uses section, what types of uses do you want to see in Cordelia, particularly along Business Center Drive? What's your vision for housing in the area? Should warehousing be permitted anywhere? Should the Garaventa Site allow for housing in mixed uses? And what is the vision for what commercial might look like at that site? And then finally, we're seeking confirmation on direction for the Sassoon Valley. At the prior session, the team presented areas for study identified based on property owner interest and alignment with the agritourism center concepts in the county's Sassoon Valley strategic plan. As directed, we heard that the general plan would reserve these areas for further study to determine what the city's future role would be in their development. Council noted that sites on the north side of I-80 would not be annexed to the city but would potentially be served by city water in a way that supports the community's vision for Sassoon Valley. Sites on the south side could be annexed to the city to access better infrastructure needed for larger wine, food, and other beverage manufacturing. So in sum, there was conditional support for the study area concept, provided that there was close coordination with the county and alignment with the strategic plan. Staff received a letter from the county expressing concern over these study areas as well as Nelson Hill development. These concerns related particularly to intrusion into the valley, but also a desire to continue collaboration on joint tourism opportunities and support from the city in terms of public services that could mutually benefit both parties. Staff also met with the Sassoon Valley Vintners and Growers Association. Representatives expressed a desire for future industrial-scale winemaking operations to be located on the south side of I-80, but indicated a strong disinterest in the city specifying any of the four areas for inclusion in the general plan. Rather, they would prefer the city include policy language in the general plan directing the city to work with the county and other valley interests to plan for the needs of the valley, but without the city's direct annexation of land within the valley. So based on this feedback, there are several options. Following previous direction, we can either keep that to include the four study areas in the general plan. We can follow the Vintners and Growers Association's recommendation for that general policy language with no study areas or annexation. We can remove the four study areas and do not include any language around collaboration. We can remove one or more of the study areas. We can remove one or more study areas and apply land use designations now rather than continuing to study. And it is staff's recommendation that we remove Study Areas One, Two, and Four in keeping with the Vintners and Growers Association recommendation, but keep Study Area Three. This is because there are concerns about running out of industrial land in the nearer-term future. This, we're calling it the Hale Ranch area adjacent to Anheuser-Busch, is one of the only large contiguous parcels near existing food and beverage manufacturing that could help to the city continue its strength in high-value industrial development. Policies in support of this study area could require that land use and zoning be limited to specific industries, including winemaking and production activities, agricultural technology, food and beverage manufacturing, and specific exclusion of warehousing or distribution uses. This choice would allow the city to capitalize on existing strengths, such as its water supply and adjacent infrastructure, and its growing food production technology expertise in the region. So to conclude that, the key question is, is there desire to confirm or revise the direction given for the Sassoon Valley? And that concludes my presentation, and I'll go back to the various sections after public comment.
Mr. City Clerk and City Attorney, we're going to go ahead and take public comment now, and we'd like to start with the two supervisors, if they have anything to say. Monica, do you want to come up first? Okay.
Two coming, four.
(laughter)
So, good evening. My name is Monica Brown. In fact, the area that you're talking about is in my district. I just want to reaffirm the county's position that our administrator, Bill Emlyn, conveyed to you via the letter that is in your packet. What's in the county remains in the county, what's in the city remains in the city, and there's no need to encroach on either side of the Sassoon Valley. I have great concerns about Nelson Hill as well. We have fires there every year, usually like about two, we're behind this year, that go up on the hill, and many times evacuations are required. I believe that the Nelson Hill development is a danger to the 400 houses planned for that location. Serious mitigation would be needed for fires that almost begin on I-80. We've seen in Fairfield what happens when a fire starts along the freeway and moves quickly to the houses. This is what happened in the Marigold area. A fast-moving fire that is wind aided could be disaster with just one in and one out onto a small country road to the east. With the parcel, the rest of the parcels in this session that are in the city limits, most of these projects could be SB 330 projects severely hamstringing the city's ability to property integrate into the city without the accompanying infrastructure, businesses, et cetera, with all of these potential new developments that are in addition to your RENA numbers that are already exceed state requirements. Fairfield needs large, open areas for retail highway commercial that should remain zoned that way. We've already seen a rebound in retail in areas that are away from the downtown areas in large cities to areas with apartments, bars, restaurants, and retail today. It's about places for people to live, connect with each other. Look at the Wall Street Journal of June 2023. The CEO of the International Council of Shopping Centers states that they are confident that the ongoing transformation of emerging trends, services, and behaviors are positive signs of a promising and profitable future for the retail sector. The Sassoon Valley would be a huge catalyst for the retail sector here, and Americans' confidence in rebounding don't let it pass Fairfield by. And by the way, many of you were, I don't know if you were around, but remember when Red Top slid? Remember when it was going down and took out McGary for about 10 years or so? Plus, I think we had something called, oh, that's right, Benicia didn't have a water supply because the hills slide. So really think about the fact that when you're thinking about building somewhere near with using those hills, they're going to come down. They, you see it right now when you go down 680, you see how it's already sliding. So right now, I don't understand why we seem to be picked on. Sorry, that's how I feel. I don't understand why we're being picked on. I don't, I've not heard what's happening with over there on Highway 12, Walmart. How big is that area? What about the area next to Budweiser that we used to play baseball on? I mean, there's areas out there you guys can look at that you don't need to take ag land. As I was driving on Cordelia Road, it was nice to see the corn growing and all the other stuff that's growing. We already have an issue called flattery. I think we have enough on our plate that we don't need to be divisive. I think what we need to do is come together and make sure that all the ag that we have stays ag. So hopefully that won't recuse me. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.[1172.22][1172.22](laughter) Hello Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
You don't have to bend over. We had some scouts in here the other day, and they're a little shorter, about my height.
I feel special, thank you.
Yeah.[1191.42][1191.42](laughter)
Well, let me first say this. I do applaud the fact that this council is looking for ways in which to service the community. Okay, I applaud you on that. However, of course, you know, I'm here to talk to you about Sassoon Valley, which resides in my district, and I'm just going to read to you some of my concerns. The Sassoon Valley has distinctly unique attributes important to the culture, agriculture, and economy of the county, and should remain unincorporated. For this reason, I concur with your staff that Study Areas One, Two, and Four should not be included in further review. However, I do not agree with your staff's recommendation that Study Area Three should be included, and asks that you also exclude Study Area Three from further studies. This area is agriculture, and if additional agricultural processing is needed, then the county can work with property owners and vintners to determine if such uses should be provided. We do not see, we do see an opportunity for the city to partner with the county. Okay, wait a minute. Oh, boy. Okay. We do see an opportunity for the city to partner with the county, to explore ways to work collaboratively together to augment and support the wineries and agritourism existing and destined for Sassoon Valley. For this reason, I recommend that the county follow staff's Option Two with modifications. The city should eliminate all four study areas and include policy language in the general plan for the city to partner with the county, to work with valley stakeholders, to obtain stakeholder input, and identify methods to support the Sassoon Valley tourism and agriculture within the city's direct, without the city's direct annexation of land within the valley. In regards to Nelson Hill, it is understood that this location was included in the general plan for some time since it is within the city's urban line. However, we all know that this area is prone to wildfire almost yearly, and is very concerning that this location will be selected for residential development, giving challenges with access and traffic and impact to county roads in addition to the fire concerns. For this reason, I recommend that the council direct Nelson Hill to be retained as park-open space only, similar to staff's Alternative Number Two in the report. And I want to thank you all for listening to my concerns and taking those into consideration. But as you know, it is very important that we preserve our agriculture and our open spaces and to work collaboratively with the county. That is our desire, and that's what we would like to do with this city. So again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Supervisor.
Next speaker is Chris Engel, followed by Joe Green Heffern.
We have Oakland Heights tonight, huh?
Oh, this is, this is really nice.[1426.88][1426.88](laughter) I don't feel like I have to bend over. So, members of the council, my name is Chris Engel. I live at 3750 Thomason Lane, which is in Sassoon Valley, south of the freeway. I'm happy that everybody has taken the time to put such effort into studying the various options in Sassoon Valley, and I'm also pleased that three of those options, one, two, and four, are being eliminated. However, when it comes to Option Three, I agree with, I agree with the last speaker that the Option Two, following the Vintners and Growers Association recommendation, is the one that I and I think my neighbors would support. I've been coming to these meetings for almost two years now, and if there's one, if there's one underlying message that I think has been there throughout, it's leave Sassoon Valley as it is. The fact is, is that there's a Sassoon Valley general plan. It exists. It's being executed, and those who executed don't want any of these parcels annexed. It might seem, it might seem a small thing that, okay, we're just annexing one piece, but you can zone it one way, and then it can, then the zoning can be pushed in a different way that's at some later time by some, by some other planning commissioner or council. So overall, I think the best way to preserve Sassoon Valley is to keep it in ag, and I would like, would ask that the council move in that general direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Green Heffern, followed by Brian Steele.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and Council. My name is Joe Green Heffern, and I live in Cordelia. Your agenda report talks of confirming the Cordelia vision tonight with detailed services and infrastructure to be identified later. Well, in my vision, you need to reserve land for the needed services and basic infrastructure first before all the sites are gobbled up for housing or warehouses. As a broad vision, Cordelia is the logical service gateway for Sassoon Valley agriculture, growing agritourism, and the biotechnology and other industries being nurtured at Solano College. In my vision, residents can walk or bike to meet most of their daily needs. They don't have to drive five or 10 miles. My opinion letter in Sunday's Daily Republic highlighted key things that are needed to make sure this happens. First is accessible grocery and neighborhood retail on both the north and south sides of I-80, which you acknowledged in your presentation. Second is an accessible elementary school and neighborhood park to serve the high-density housing that is already and continuing to be built in North Cordelia. Third, the Sassoon-Pitman Interchange needs urgent upgrades to allow westbound access to I-80 and provide bike pedestrian connectivity between north and south Cordelia. This is key to making Sassoon Valley Place attractive to local retail and commercial and to relieve congestion on Green Valley Road. It will also improve wildfire evacuation capability and public safety. Fourth, vacant commercial properties south of Solano College should be repurposed if needed for missing school, park, or retail uses where other commercial or industrial uses aren't viable. And last, the city and county coordination should be improved to mitigate transportation and other cumulative impacts from development. I also have a comment with respect to the grocery store demand analysis described in the agenda report. It underestimates the real demand. First, it fails to account for the high-density housing on three sites along Sassoon Valley Road already planned in the housing element. Second, it does not account for demand leakage where people shop outside of Cordelia. I do half of my shopping at Winko in Vacaville, another quarter at Trader Joe's, but only one quarter at Costco and Safeway. Why? As a two-person household, we do not need large quantities sold by Costco, and Safeway is not price competitive. It bugs me that half of my purchases and related sales tax leave Fairfield. I expect that other Cordelia folks and people in this room might do similarly. Having more and better access grocery options in Cordelia would return this lost demand to Fairfield. After fixing the demand analysis, the picture for grocery retail will be more attractive and not a convenient justification for added housing requested by a few property owners, but not by thousands of residents. I do support the agenda report's conclusion that adding grocery on the south side of I-80 is the highest priority, but I would hate to see the opportunity for grocery on the north side of Sassoon Valley Road be lost forever because of faulty demand analysis or lack of a timely upgrade to the Sassoon-Pitman Interchange. Let's not miss this last opportunity to preserve sites for needed services in Cordelia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Steele, followed by Chuck Selfelt.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Brian Steele, and I'm with Waymark Development, and I'm working with the Nelson family and the owners of Nelson Hill. And I wanted to be direct and request that the council direct staff to include Nelson Hill in the general plan update and associated environmental review for housing and open-space development, as mentioned, that is currently contemplated by the in-place general plan that identifies the Nelson Hill property as a master plan and/or specific plan area to be studied to include a combination of residential, low- to medium-residential land use and open space. My thoughts are the future is now, and a decision by the council to include Nelson Hill in the general plan update will fulfill the city's vision of housing in open space and fulfill many of the land use policies relative to preserving and enhancing and fulfill many of the land use policies relative to preserving and enhancing the city's desired physical character, providing a variety of housing types, and maximizing the procurement and preservation of public open space for the citizens of Fairfield. And some of the benefits that I've, I've noted here, you know, this would give the city the opportunity to control the destiny of Nelson Hill. Right now, it's in the county's purview because it's, they operate, they have, they possess the mining permit, and it is not within the city's control. So that mining permit allows the tenant of the facility to take out a quarter million tons a year out of the hill. So there's no control over the height, the extraction of that material, but with the housing development, we can stop the mine, cease the operation, hide the houses into the middle of the bowl as, as contemplated, and evaluate with staff the viability of the transportation and circulation. It will preserve the visual character of the hill as you kind of see it today. It's in the sphere of influence and urban limit line, and it's already in the city's general plan and housing, open space, master plan. And relative to the fire, I can't speak to it explicitly having not talked with any of the fire folks, but many of the neighboring residents that I've spoken with adjacent to Nelson Hill are attributing a lot of those fires not to random acts of environment, but to transient residents that are residing on the property. And the complication of having to call the sheriff that takes many minutes to get there instead of calling the municipal police to handle some of those situations where the residents are now interfacing with some of these folks that are causing fires on the hill. So I think activating the hill as a public benefit, more people on it, there will be less transients, I think there'll be less fires, and some of the complications in the past that are no longer here is that there are two new fire stations that meet the fire demand and safety requirements in the city of Fairfield to address that. So that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Seifelt, followed by Pam Nelson.
Thanks for the time, council members. I've worked with the family for several years, and what my job was is try to find a developer that wants to carry out the wishes of the family. The family, as you guys all know, they've been here as long as the city of Fairfield has. And I think that, you know, when I listen to everybody, they want open space, which this gives them, you know, 100, 150 acres open space at no cost to the city, and the developer wants the burden of cost to maintain it. I think that the, when you see the walking paths and everything, I think those can be used both ways, as fire preventions, as fire breaks. So if they are really concerned about the fire issues, I think that really helps it. We've got some really unique interest in that open space that I think would further enhance the value of the community and fire protection again. So, you know, again, it's been in the general plan, you know, not in it, but always been addressed. So I would just encourage you to, the family would love it if you guys could see them, have a legacy, give something to the county, give something to the city, you know, and have something proud that everybody can respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Nelson, followed by Brett Hoag.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I am Pam Nelson. I live on the Cordelia Road next to the Nelson Hill Quarry. My husband's grandfather purchased the quarry in the early 30s, and my husband's grandfather, his father, and his uncle all worked on the property all their lives. I've heard many stories about the hill, but one of them is about how high the hill used to be, twice as tall as it is now back in the 30s. I also heard stories about how hundreds of people once chiseled cobblestones on the top of the hill, sending the stones down the hill in rail cars to the Sassoon Waterway and delivering them to the streets of San Francisco. The large rock footings at the Golden Gate Bridge near Fort Mason are from the Nelson Hill Quarry. My husband's father and his uncle each received letters from the President of the United States requesting that they not enlist in the military, but instead remain in Solano County and quarry the Nelson Hill for the needed runways for Travis Air Force Base. Nelson Hill is also home to Fairfield's very large water tank. Today's economics and times have drastically changed the quarry business, and, and today there's no scheduled dynamite explosions and dust bothering the neighbors and large trucks bothering the roads, and the entrance to the quarry property is gated and locked at night, and there's signage warning trespassers. But yet I've met hundreds of local people who had, confessed to me how they've enjoyed walking up the hill or driving up there just to see the view, and I get it. It's a great view. I, I'd want to go up there if I was one of those people too. You can see the marsh on one side, you can see twin sisters on the other, and on a clear day, I think I've seen snow capped mountains in the Sierra Mountains. I believe it's time for the Nelson Hill to be included in the general plan, and the Nelson Hill deserves to be shared by the whole community through planned open space, hiking trails, parks, and new homes. The property has served this community for hundreds of years, and it's time to plan for our next 100 years for our families. With your approval, Nelson Hill can become a place for our community to be very proud of and safely enjoy. Please vote tonight to include Nelson Hill property in your general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Hoag, followed by Jim Leland.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brett Hoag with Buzz Oats. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm impressed that you pronounced it correctly. The Sassoon Valley is the gem of Solano County. We need to do all that we can to support the valley farmers and to make the tools available so that the valley can thrive. The Sassoon Valley Strategic Plan's vision statement reads in part, "Sassoon Valley is a unique farming region that supports profitable family farms and quality of life for all its residents. It is a destination for tourists seeking world-class wine, identifiable Sassoon Valley farm products, and a beautiful agricultural landscape." The strategic plan priorities are in part to maintain ag and rural character, improve farm production and income, and provide infrastructure to support expanding uses of Sassoon Valley. All of these priorities are dependent on modern processing facilities and a place that will maintain the rural character of the valley and improve income and production by moving the industrial part of farming to a site that is south of Interstate 80. Services from the city of Fairfield will help to implement this, the county's strategic plan. We have approximately 48 acres adjacent to the Anheuser-Busch plant on Cordelia Road in Study Area Number 3. The Sassoon Vintners, the Sassoon Valley Vintners and Growers Association has stated a desire for an industrial-sized winemaking operation south of Interstate 80. This site has good access to Interstate 80 and Highway 12. The city has sewer, water, and storm drain connections across the street. A modern agricultural processing facility needs the capacity of municipal utilities. Groundwater wells can be unreliable. They can contribute to groundwater depletion, and it, and they are limited as do not impacting existing wells. Additionally, industrial waste ponds struggle without, with odor control, Cordelia Road floods, more land will be needed for, for ponds and detention without municipal services. The vision and priorities of the county's strategic plan will most likely be, be achieved with a modern agricultural industrial park south of Interstate 80 with municipal services directly across the street. We respectfully urge you to include Study Area Number 3 in the general plan update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Leland, followed by Nora Dizon.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Leland, Director of Planning and Development for Camus Vineyards. Like other speakers, we have been following this with the city for almost two years, and the various stakeholders out there have consistently given you the same message you've just heard from many speakers, which is we endorse Recommendation Number 2, we oppose Recommendation Number 6. And we strongly believe that the city council and the Board of Supervisors should find a way to work collaboratively and together on a plan for both the incorporated and unincorporated portions around Sassoon Valley. I can tell you that a couple of things. We have one of the most modern and one of the largest wineries in California located on Cordelia Road. It uses no municipal services that I'm aware of. They are not necessary for that scale winery. The other thing I want to say is that I've spent 50 years or so in various portions of community development, including public sector planning, private sector planning, real estate development, being a planning commissioner and being a city council member. And I can tell you the fastest way to get to what you want to do is to cooperate with the county and take a pause and not try to wrap this up in this cycle of the general plan update. You will be a major beneficiary of the things you don't know about yet, nor does the board, that are going to happen in Sassoon Valley, that are going to drive significant economic development. And a lot of that economic development will require tourist products built in the city near Sassoon Valley. From what I've heard, I'm not sure right now you're imagining the kind of things we're imagining that need to be built, but I think if we work together, you would, you might have an aha moment about the power of the tourism that's coming over the next 10 years associated with the rapid growth of winemaking in the valley. So I urge you to, to take a pause, put an asterisk at the county-city border on Sassoon Valley Road that says special study area, and some language in this cycle of the general plan that says, "Go conduct a joint planning study with the county to do these goals." And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nora Dizon, followed by Marilyn Farley.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and city council members. Thank you for listening or allowing me to speak on this matter. Costco is a membership warehouse club. It's not a grocery store. We do not need 2,100 more housing units to justify a grocery store. There are other things that have been said repeatedly but seems to be ignored. We have a problem where there's too much interest in developing in Cordelia because we've got lower permit fees. We've got infrastructure that's in place even though it's inadequate still, there's infrastructure in place. Tomorrow evening, a train station-specific plan developer is asking that they be relieved from having to build the new Cannon Road before building housing. The new train station was completed in 2017. It's a plan for 6,700 houses or housing units. It's almost six years ago that the train station was completed, yet it's struggling to gain momentum, and it is the problem with the roads where you're requiring that the first developer in each area build the major roads. Not too long ago, City of Fairfield issued Series B bonds to finance the purchase of two apartments for Don and Watersgate. Not that the city becomes the owner, but that you were, okay, anyway. That was $186 million. So a few tenants, just a few people, got a little bit of a benefit. Now, to put that kind of money towards roads would have been a much better decision and would serve a lot of the people, would serve the majority, as opposed to just a very few people. I sympathize with those suffering with traffic issues on Markley Lane. We also have dangerous school traffic issues in our area, but in our area, the city wants us to storm FSUSD. At Markley, the city has instructed, has been instructed to modify its capital improvement schedule and fit a plan to build Markley outside of the first developer system. I have no issue with this idea, but I have a problem with our district being given the runaround while Vacaville residents are treated with respect. Our city should help solve problems, not create problems. The parcel next to Eldomati should have been developed for community benefit instead of a 72-unit apartment.
You have five seconds.
There is no cohesive plan for our area. Helping developers and stepping on residents seems to be the consistent game here. Good night.
Thank you.
Marilyn Farley, followed by Dwayne Crom.
This is magic. You just push and it goes down?
There's a little thing on your right side.
Oh, I see. Hey. How about that? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, I'd like to thank the staff for the staff report. Very much appreciated. I just wanted to comment briefly on the staff recommendation to keep Study Area Number 3. If you look at the map, it takes up a very large portion of the area south of Interstate 80, and I think it would really disrupt the flow of agriculture as the, the farmers continue to work to develop the Sassoon Valley's plan and vision. And I would just, I was kind of surprised to see all of the parcels that the owners have requested annexation for in the Cordelia area. And I'm wondering if the city's statement about not having adequate land for industrial and particularly for some of these food-related manufacturing things. In Cordelia, there is already an area along Business Center Drive that the staff report says is designated for manufacturing perhaps, designated for green tech. Couldn't that same project move into that area? Couldn't it move into the area that Sino wants to rezone along Lopes Road? It seems like there are some opportunities to relocate that and not need to develop in the Sassoon Valley, and I hope that you will consider them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne Crom, followed by Lisa Howard.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Dwayne Crom, live in Fairfield, Paradise Valley. See you Saturday. I want to comment specifically on the Sassoon Valley issues. I thought Jim Leland did a really good job. The, the idea of cooperating with the county of the Vintners and Growers Association, the Early Growth Committee has been involved with some of these discussions, it's going incredibly well. So I, I would hope that we can keep the progress going. I know Mayor Moy has been out there multiple times and has talked with energy about wanting to do this cooperative process, and we, I think we all think it'll be a really good thing to do. Lisa's a great spokeswoman for the Sassoon Valley Vintners and Growers. One of the things that we haven't talked about tonight, which is traffic in the county. The Early Growth Committee has made a pretty consistent point of asking the county to take a look at the strategic plan for Sassoon Valley and the traffic infrastructure requirements that that plan identifies, but that are unfunded. I mean, part of the problem we have with traffic in Sassoon Valley, it's as it pours out into city Fairfield, but it's also as people move through the valley. So we think that the issue of traffic in Sassoon Valley is also a big county issue, and it's a big issue for people that want to build more wineries and tasting rooms. It's, it needs work. It needs a lot of work, and we're, we're working on that. Jim Leland touched on the idea about utilities needed for wineries. I mean, as he said, Camus, which is one of the biggest wineries around, doesn't. And also speaking of Camus-Cordelia, last year, we were in Canada and Michigan. And I don't know if you guys know this, if you look at the bottles of Camus, Conundrum of Bonanza, it says Fairfield. It's like one of the best marketing tools for the city of Fairfield is having Camus wines, because it's the zip code, is a Fairfield zip code. So the word Fairfield is prominent on every bottle of Camus wines that come out of that winery. We've seen them again in Canada, Michigan, it's, they're all over the place. It's, it's a wonderful thing. The ag-urban interface that Marilyn mentioned briefly, so that Area 3, you know, it, it really triples the amount of interface border between ag and urban. Right now, you've got a solid line. If you go out, you triple the amount of edge that you have to deal with. Farmers traditionally have problems with the ag-urban interface. You know, you can't predict if it's Right now, you've got a solid line. If you go out, you triple the amount of edge that you have to deal with. Farmers traditionally have problems with the ag-urban interface. You know, you can't predict if it's an industrial-type use versus residential, but it, it interferes with the flow of the agricultural commerce through the area, and it puts urban, urban edge pressures triple the amount you have right now, if you just leave it alone. That's all I have for notes. Thank you, and appreciate all the work you've been doing. And again, as Marilyn said, it was a very nice staff report. Thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you.
Lisa Howard is our last speaker card, and then we have one person with their hand up online. Ms. Howard?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Good to see you all again. I was reading a book last week. I don't know if you've read it. It's called "The Speed of Trust." It's by Stephen Covey. It guides business owners and public figures and their organization towards unprecedented public productivity and satisfaction. Trust takes years to build, seconds to break, and forever to rebuild. I'm sure you all know I'm here to talk about the Sassoon Valley area. You have six options. You only have one option that builds trust. Option two is a olive branch from us in Sassoon Valley to say, hey, we are not going to shut down the conversation of commercial in this area, but we need to be at the table. It doesn't close the door on the things that Buzz Oates mentioned, the representative from Buzz Oates. It doesn't shut down the city's concern with the lack of commercial and industrial development. But what it does do is it ensures that what gets built is right, and that we're all at the table, the county, the city, the landowners, the main stakeholders. It's a simple choice, and really, in the end, if it's done right, everybody wins. I suggest you choose the choice of trust.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have one hand raised online. Speaker online whenever you're ready. And if you feel like it, you can please identify yourself by name, please.
We have Jose McNeil. Ma'am, could you please speak up?
Sorry, I was muted there, I think. This is Jose McNeil.
Hi, Jose.
Yeah, I'm okay. So, I have not re-identified myself as a woman yet, so. But I was caught, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. One, prime ag should remain prime ag, because it can't be replaced, period. I, I'm an industrial developer. I love warehouses, is what I do. But if it's prime ag, you can't replace that dirt. If the city is interested in expanding the industrial base, look south of Cordelia Road, past, adjacent to the water plant. There is a tremendous amount of land down there, two-hundred-and-forty-five acres, that they could not root grow turf on, that is available. It could be annexed into the city. It has all the facilities and all the utilities right there. It would be great. More importantly, and specifically, I'm calling on Fifty-two Fifty-three Business Center Drive. I have a rezoning plan in place to take this failed office project, which has been vacant for seven years, to be rezoned into light industrial, to provide jobs and services for the greater Fairfield area, and specifically, the Green Valley-Cordelia area. One of the things that's been glossed over is, if you look at the redevelopment of the interchanges for Six-eighty and Eighty, you can look at all the businesses that exist there, where are they going to go? They're not going to stay there with overpasses and on-ramps and off-ramps. This is a very simple process to rezone this property, to allow the success of the project to go forward. It has a very positive effect on traffic. The current zoning allows for seven-hundred cars or twenty-eight-hundred trips per day from this project. By rezoning it, it would knock it down to about eight-hundred trips per day. That's a savings. These would not be large trucks, they'd be small trucks. These would be infrequent eighteen-wheelers versus the three projects the city rezoned in Green Valley Business Park, which has been a nightmare. So, I encourage the staff to, and I encourage the city council to recommend that the staff put forward an, an agenda item to rezone Fifty-two Fifty-three Business Center Drive to light industrial. I'd like to, again, say it's, it's interesting when the, when Marilyn Farley and Duane and I agree on things, but this was an opportunity to come together, and Lisa did a great job. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I have no more speaker cards. I don't believe I have any more hands raised. Does anybody else wish to speak?
It looks like we're, we're done, speakers. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring this back for discussion here, and we will start with the Cordelia decisions, and we'll go through them one by one, and get your thoughts and what you want to see. All right?
So, our first area of discussion revolves around grocery stores in Cordelia. Our economic consultant is available for any questions that you, if any, come up. But the decision points that we're looking for today, is there direction to identify sufficient housing sites to support a new full-size grocery store, or continue with current pipeline development to support a smaller grocery store? What sites of the, of, you know, we have identified two, we have evaluated two, but where should the grocery store go? Or should we leave it to the market to determine the location?
All right, we're going to start with that. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. So, first of all, thank you for this presentation. It was so well organized. I remember when I got your first presentation some months ago, and literally, my eyes glazed over. So, thank you for being so organized. Thank you for having page numbers. Thank you for getting this packet out to the community, so they would know exactly what we would be talking about. So, with that, grocery stores. So, my thought, and thank you for doing this study. This, this is awesome. Because it helps us kind of anchor the conversation. So, it's two choices. Either wait until we have enough rooftops, units, for a full, a full-size grocery store, or where we stand now, we have a half-size grocery store, like a Sprouts. So, my first thought, and I definitely want to, you know, have this dialogue amongst my colleagues, but my first thought is that a half-store now would be preferable, because in my mind, we're not, we're not letting housing be the driver. We have something now, and not make housing be a driver, not make decisions about housing units that may not fit for Cordelia, just because we want those rooftops. In my mind, I feel like, I live on the Cordelia side, the, the Oak Brook side, I don't know how to best say, around the corner from Rodriguez High School. And in my mind, with the housing development that has gone, come up there, I believe that we could make a half-size store very successful. I really like, let me just make sure, I think it's three, it's the one right off of, right off the freeway. Yeah, three. I believe three would be really successful, too, just because people that are traveling, they can now just pop off of, of the freeway there, you know, just like they do Jack in the Box and gas station, they would just pop off and, and go over to that grocery store. So, I do believe that there would be a lot of support there. Two, to me, doesn't make as much sense. I know that that is a future plan. I believe it's a future Caltrans plan for an exit, but as, but it seems like it's, I don't want to say decades off, but it seems like it's way down the, way down the road. And so, that would be no one, not no one, but, you know, it'd be hard access off of Six-eighty for people to get there and, and support it outside of the Cordelia area. And in my mind, we want to make sure that this is wildly successful and for the investors that would, that would do, you know, number three. So, anyway, that's my, that's my thoughts about the grocery stores.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I, yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Carr.
Yeah. Myself and Councilwoman Williams were, are new on the dais, and we did get a special little bit of attention and brought up to speed on this, and we got a little tour. And we actually went around to all these sites with the city manager. And I, I'm in full agreement with Councilwoman Williams, the half-store, and then spot three would be best. And like she said, with the traffic popping on and off, I think that's, like I said, I'm in full agreement with that. I lived in Cordelia for six years, and you almost have to plan your going-to-the-store times, because you only have that one little store out there. And with this over here, I think would be one of the better spots as well. But a half-store for now would be great, Sprouts. And just a, a little point of clarification with some of the speakers, we don't get to dictate, "We want this store, and go ahead and build it." We don't get to do things like that. That's not how it goes. The housing that they have developed, those aren't our numbers. That isn't the city that said, hey, we want these many houses. That's the store, that's their studies. And they're not going to build the store without those many houses. It has nothing to do with what we want. We don't, I mean, this is, I just wanted to clarify that. The store, the, the large-box stores such as Safeway or Rayleigh's, they set the number of when they're going to build it, and I just want to make sure that you guys are clear on that. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing and make sure we're all on the same page. What I heard from Councilwoman Williams was, you know, in, in today's market, like thinking about, quite literally today, that there's .58, so there's enough to support something like a Sprouts footprint. And, and it's a little more nuanced than that. So, what, what BAE is saying, and I would, I would let the gentleman from BAE speak to this, is at the build-out of what is currently planned in Cordelia, which is in the ballpark of another nineteen-hundred units, right? So, not even planning for this twenty-one hundred units that's identified gets you to the .58. Is that correct? Yeah, we'll, we'll have him just make sure we're all clear.
Hi, Matt Cota, Principal with BAE Urban Economics. City manager is correct. The calculations of the potential support for a roughly half-sized supermarket would be at build-out of the housing units that are planned and, and proposed in that, in that area. So, not something that we would expect to happen in the very near future, but years out, when all of that housing that's on the books, in the pipeline, is fully built out. And I want to caution also that this is an estimate of the number of housing units needed to demonstrate the demand for one of these grocery stores. It is not a guarantee, as the council member indicated, that the grocery stores would choose to invest. It's not that there's a magic, set-in-stone number, and they're automatically going to do that. So, that's an important consideration. But certainly, as you add more housing units, you add more residents to the area, then you're getting additional demand, and you're increasing your likelihood that a supermarket operator would want to enter the area.
And could I just ask you, sir, so what about the folks that say, like, maybe your numbers are full of it? I'm wondering, I mean, this is what you do for a living. It's like people who make wine, that's what they do.
Correct.
So, you're not full of it, are you, sir?
No. And there's probably as much art to projecting market demand and store feasibility as there is in making fine wine. So, we want to always be cognizant of that, but we've documented the analysis, the assumptions, the underpinnings of these conclusions in the memo, and we believe it's providing a reasonable picture of what it would take to get a supermarket in this area.
Thank you so much. Yes, Councilwoman?
So, my best way to ask is, what's the workaround for a half-size grocery store? I, I thought I heard that Trader Joe's came to Fairfield and wasn't really, that, that wasn't, it wasn't likely, because there wasn't enough rooftops. And I guess there, I don't know if there was a city pitch, I don't know if there was an economic development drive, community development drive, that convinced them that there was enough want and passion and need. What does, what does that look like?
Sure. So, Trader Joe's, as you know, is kind of a specialty grocer. They've got their following of people, they have certain products they like to buy there. And if you look at how Trader Joe's rolled out throughout all of Northern California, they started with the most dense, population-dense locations that they could find, and then they've gradually kind of spread out into what they would have considered second-tier, third-tier locations, as they've sort of built out their network of stores. And so, what they've done is they've picked the very prime locations first, where they could make the most money and have the most customers, and then they've slowly kind of picked off other sites that were second-best, third-best, and so forth. And so, a store like a Trader Joe's is, is probably of a mindset that we have a location in Fairfield. People will travel to our store. It's not necessarily the everyday store for, for them, so we can maybe have them visit us once a week instead of twice a week, if you're typical average grocery store shopper. And that means they'll come from further away. So, where do they locate? A more central location, where they can have access to the entire Fairfield market. So, they're not necessarily going to say, "Let's have a second store in Cordelia area," when they think those people are already coming to our store within the city. So, you have to look for a different operator that's not yet in the market. And I think a, a lot of that is going to depend on providing a location that has complementary uses, that has the kinds of access, visibility, that they're looking for, so people can get there, not just from the immediately surrounding neighborhoods, but from further away. So, there's a convenience factor there. And that's one of the reasons that we suggested that the site number three, to have better access both in the near term as well as in the longer term with those proposed freeway improvements, would probably be better at bringing people to that location, not just from north and south Cordelia, but also from locations that are a little bit further away. So, it's really a matter of making the locations as attractive as possible, given that a specialty retailer, somebody like a Sprouts, that doesn't have a store on every corner, is going to say, "What's a location that's going to be most beneficial for us out of all the different locations that we can possibly think of?" That was given as an example in the memos, to kind of visualize the size of store that we're talking about. But there are other independent grocers that have different kinds of market considerations and so forth, that would be of a similar size. And I think the city needs to be open to the fact that if you are looking at a future where there's a limited number of additional housing units developed in that area, it may not be a Sprouts, it may not be a Trader Joe's, it could be something else that sees the need and wants to serve that demand that's in the area, based on the number of housing units that are ultimately built there. So, that's not- So that's not a nice, neat answer, but I think it's the reality of the situation. This isn't a shoe-in location because of being on the edge of the city. So you just have to anticipate that, you know, these decisions are made overnight. You don't see a new supermarket cropping up.
And this might be more of a question for staff, but our decision tonight is about changing the zoning of that area, like three, and changing that zoning and setting an intention. So once that is set, if we do decide grocery, the next steps would just really be to send it to independent grocers and see if this is a viable site. But in the meantime, to do that, we've already changed the zoning in the background. Yes?
To the second half of that question, yes, right? You know, it's that specific intention that would allow us, through our economic development efforts, to go and, you know, do our best to recruit the types of grocers then that could potentially fit with, you know, as the gentleman said, with no guarantee of success in those recruitment efforts. But that is something that we could then prioritize in terms of our economic development efforts.
And if there is a grocer, then we would have expedited the process by studying, you know, at least at a programmatic level, the environmental consequences in the EIR, zoning it correctly so it can happen faster if there is somebody waiting in the wings here.
Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you. I had a question for the grocery analysis. So as it was mentioned, Costco is a membership-based grocery store. And so I wanted to ask if you could just explain the impact that had on the study and the analysis? Because I also know that a lot of individuals from outside of Solano County come and shop at Costco. So how does that work into the study? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's part of the overall picture of supply and demand for grocery stores within the city of Asheville. We know that a lot of grocery shopping does occur. So there are some people who are members that are going to shop at Costco regularly and an inordinate amount of their shopping is going to go to Costco for, you know, their own personal shopping preferences. That's demand that is not going to go to some other grocery store, such as a Safeway, such as a Trader Joe's, or Save Mart, or Rayleigh's, or what have you. So the demand is fluid. It's kind of moving around to all the different stores within the area. And the retailers who would think about coming to Fairfield in the Cordelia area in particular are going to be asking, you know, "What are the stores that exist that we may be able to take some sales away from? Because we might have a more convenient location. We won't have barriers to being a member for a normal conventional grocery store and so forth." So it's all factored into that. It's part of people's normal shopping. And I think, again, the retailers are going to look at that aggregate demand and what's available, given the population, given the stores that are there to serve that population, what the traffic patterns are, the travel patterns of the shoppers. And they're going to make that decision. And they will certainly consider that places like Costco, Walmarts, Targets, other stores that also sell grocery stores are taking some of that demand away from the traditional food stores. Like we used to only have regular supermarkets. Now we have all these other kinds of venues for people to do their shopping. So it's factored into the overall analysis.
Councilman Carr?
Basically, the process is, right, correct me if I'm wrong. So the rezoning for a grocery store would have to go planning commission and then back to the council. Is that right? David?
So the zoning on site number three, Regional Highway Commercial, already does allow for a grocery store?
I thought, okay.
But site number two would require.
That would require it, so it has to go, okay, in front of planning.
All right. Any other comments? Councilman Tornison?
Yeah, I'm fine with three.
Okay.
I'd like to get a grocery store.
So it looks like, could you just give me a little thumbs up here if site three is good with all of everybody? Okay, good. And so we're going to go ahead and do that, okay? So site three, good job, guys. All right. Let's go to housing now.
Next consideration of where housing should go. And, you know, while direction was given for a smaller grocery store, there are still considerations related to future housing elements, planning for housing there, and then how to address these landowner requests. So is it the preference of council to go through site by site?
What was that question?
Would you prefer to go through site by site for the property owner requests to redesignate for housing?
For, it's up to you. For me, I can go through all 11 at once.
Okay, sure. I like that. He's efficient here. Okay. Anybody else have comment on this? Oh, yeah. Councilwoman?
Before we get into discussion, just to clarify, is number one, is that considered prime ag?
I'm going to have.
Just for property.
Good evening. Dave Feinstein, interim Community Development Director. So site one is not prime ag. It's almost entirely hilly and sloped. So it's, in our existing general plan, a large amount of that is shown essentially for grazing land, a little bit of it for commercial, but mostly for grazing kinds of uses.
Right, and that's the property right next to the dairy.
And the dairy wants to expand, is, yes, they've already asked to do that? And what does that look like?
Sure. So the dairy hasn't asked to expand, but the landowner, the Ferrari family, has requested as a part of the general plan for us to take a look at this site. Because we're focused primarily on housing tonight. We're showing this in the housing discussion. But they've shown some interest in expanding the dairy and you can see it just to the, that's the dairy. So they're interested in having housing on most of it. This little section over here, though, they've indicated that's where the dairy would potentially expand. The dairy is shown with an industrial designation. And so the focus for the housing discussion is really more over here. This portion right here, we would expect to designate for some sort of industrial to allow for that expansion of the dairy.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question about one.
Okay, Councilwoman?
So one is where, and I don't want to misspeak, Caltrans, is it an approval or?
Yeah, not an approval. As a part of the overall five or six packages of the Solano Transportation Authority's long-term 80, 680, 12 interchange project is where Red Top Road would extend, where it terminates right now under 80. So if you're driving on Red Top Road or you get off on 80 and you go towards the dairy, there's, I think, a Jack in the Box and a gas station. And then you make sort of an immediate right and you curve around to where the dairy's at. Well, right there where that comes under the freeway, long-term, that'll actually loop up the hill, have an interchange at Highway 12, and then loop back down and around and connect into where Business Center Drive, you know, effectively ends north of those two freeways. And so that's a portion of package five of the project that STA has identified. There we go. There it is on the map. So you are correct. Through the middle of that Ferrari property, you can see the dairy there that's developed. So, you know, some portion of that, that's why the estimate is around 40 homes in terms of, you know, any housing allowance there. Because some portion of that's going to get eaten up by the acquisition of the rights away for that roadway.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilman Vaccaro?
Yeah, I have some questions about site six. Okay.
All right.
This was, I think this was one that was voted down, how many years ago? That's six, seven years ago by the council. I see that there's a conceptual site plan. Was that a plan that was already given?
That was a plan that the owners, or, you know, the prospective owners, have submitted conceptually for that site.
Yeah, and, you know, I see what staff is recommending. And, yeah, I mean, before we do anything with that site, I mean, I think we'd have to really look long and hard at a plan for that site, a good plan, a mixed-use plan. Because I know the other plan just basically had mostly houses and very, very little retail or commercial. So that's what I'd like to see there. So, I mean, I'm definitely not ready to vote on anything with 218 single-family homes there. No way.
So if I'm hearing you, then are you, so what staff's recommending here would be that we would be, under the general plan update, identifying this as a lifestyle center, more of a, you know, higher-end retail, really emphasizing the fact that this is this gateway into the Sassoon Valley?
It would have to be done right.
Gotcha.
Absolutely, yeah.
Councilman Tornison?
Yeah, only just to stay organized, to talk about six. I wanted to add on to that. I do want to be careful there because this is the gateway to Sassoon Valley, a major gateway. So I too agree that we need to pace ourselves here and be very careful. I think we need to also make sure that the Vittners are giving us feedback there too. Because, you know, I'm sure this is going to be a key. I don't know, I just want to make sure they're weighing in there. Also, and I know we've talked about it in our tour, I'm really concerned about that, the infrastructure there. Right now, it's a little hairy. Our students coming from Solano County, Solano Community College, and going right to get something to eat right down the street. You know, I'm concerned about that little bridgeway that crosses over 80. And so I would say that for me, whoever, wherever we do with six, like they're going to have to do an early investment into infrastructure, in my mind. I don't know if you're asking me all that, but that's my thoughts.
Yeah, that property there, Councilwoman, is owned by the Garaventa Trust. And they have spent millions upon millions just to put the road in down their Business Center Drive. So they've already invested in the roads before they've ever done anything, just to keep that in mind. I mean, more than anybody else has paid for roads around here. Yeah, it was bigly, I think David could tell you, including, I mean, it went on and on. I remember being in the middle of it and SOGs were in there going, "Holy mackerel, what's going on here?" But yeah, just so you know, they've already spent.
And the cleanup.
And the cleanup of that because that was a truck stop. So there are areas of this where you could never put homes, but can have retail on it. So it's complicated and they have, the Garaventas have. Now, they're not the ones planning this, though, right? Somebody else's?
No, the conceptual plan, I believe, was Sino, the Sino Companies. And so, you know, what I would encourage you is don't get bogged down into the conceptual plan that was submitted. Because, you know, this is, you're here, you're getting to set the vision here. And what I'm hearing, at least from two of you, potentially more, is you'd like to see sort of a bigger vision for this site as an entryway into the Sassoon Valley and really emphasizing that, hey, this needs to be something special that's really, you know, given the heft to all of the, you know, tourism that we know is going to be coming with Sassoon Valley, as well as serving this area. Now, as it relates to Councilmember Williams' question on the infrastructure, you're correct, right? There's sort of inadequate access at this site, particularly at Sassoon Valley Road and Nitzel Road. There is no westbound I-80.
Nitzel.
Or Nitzel, sorry. Nitzel Road, there is no westbound 80 access. And it's, you know, likely an undersized, you know, out-of-date overcrossing that crosses 80 there at Sassoon Valley Pittman Road. And that's where we're not yet to that phase of the general plan update where we're talking about the transportation components to support what the vision is, right? So all of these meetings that we've been having is really just establishing, okay, what is the vision? Then Diet and Batia can go and start doing that analysis and identifying, okay, here's the type of infrastructure that's going to be needed to support these things. And then that goes into what's called the transportation element of the general plan, which is just one of the many elements of the general plan. Now specifically to the westbound access, it seems like it may not necessarily be interconnected. But as STA has talked with us about pursuing the package of the 80, 680, 12 project that is that Business Center Drive, Red Top Road extension connecting to Highway 12 and Interstate 80, them pursuing that project, which I think it's their intent to pursue that project next, that actually leapfrogs two other packages, package three and four, which is the bigger, you know, sort of overcrossing where it flies over the industrial area and connects 680 onto 80. And that's simply because in talking with STA, they see that Business Center Drive, Red Top Road connection and those, you know, on-ramps, off-ramps at 12 and 80 as much more likely in the near term to get funded through Caltrans or federal dollars. And so one of the components of that, as they've approached us on that, is we've made very clear that as a part of that package, if we're going to leapfrog these packages, that we would like to see Nitzel Road, at least a westbound entrance there, be a component of that package of the project, which they're amenable to. And I know Mayor's on the STA board and has had those conversations with them as well.
I'm on it. And you're my backup girl, so you know, we're good. Yeah, it's a good question. Councilman Tornison?
Yeah, I'm with my colleagues. Leave six alone for now. Are we going to go through each one or how do you want to, how do you want to do this? Do you want me to address a few of them?
Well, I mean, I think you've got six down. You're recommending to stay with the stamp recommendation. If there are any other, you know, ones you want, the next one, just pick one and run with it, yeah?
Yeah, the, number one, you know, I just, as I go through these and I drove, you know, all of the sites, and I'm not as much in favor of changing this commercial zoning. I mean, we have been pounding Cordelia with homes. And, you know, where do we, where do we kind of back off a little bit? And I struggle with changing commercial zonings to residential. So just, I guess I'm lumping in all the ones that are already zoned commercial. I'm struggling with changing all of those. But I just wanted to throw that thought out there. But I had a question is, when was the last general plan committee meeting? Have we still been having those?
The last GPAC meeting occurred at the time of the alternatives development of.
How long ago was that?
It was a few years ago at this point.
So why did that stop?
It stopped because there was a pause to do more community engagement around Cordelia and with Sassoon Valley. And there were three additional study sessions.
And I believe Jesse's been keeping them in the loop and informing them and sending them emails to keep them, letting them know what's going on.
Is that something that's going to start up again? And you're still?
Yeah, we'd like to, after we have your recommendations, to go back to them and start fleshing out these ideas, maybe with them a little bit more, like what does a lifestyle center mean and so on? But with broad direction from you, so yes, they will be engaged in the actual policy development.
And where did the 11, I mean, this is a massive amount of work. Where did the 11 properties come from or 11 sites come from? Is it? Is it business owner, I mean, landowners reaching out to you? Are you reaching out to them?
That's right. So these are property owner requests made to the city.
So there's other properties out there, and you, we're not looking at some of them?
Yeah, we didn't proactively...
Because they didn't reach out?
Staff has proactively...
Such as Ward's Turf Nursery. I mean, that's good property that should be looked at.
I'm just curious. I don't know how we got this huge list, and I don't know why we're not having meetings. What happens, I mean, just general questions. And I'm not really looking to beat anyone up or take much time. But what if we don't hit RENA numbers? There's just so many questions. And I guess we'll get to that, but I just wanted to bring that up. It's a lot. So I'm struggling changing commercial to residential. I'll just leave it at that, and we can have more discussion.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Carr?
Can you bring up Site Seven, Nelson Hill, for me up there? I'm looking at the map here and all the view overlook, the open space acres and the marshes. But what about entry? I know this road in this area real well. That's better than a 6% grade. And right here, where it comes into the main road, Cordelia Road, is people fly through there. I was wondering also, as far as it goes with our fire department, you know, emergency access and everything to those 400 homes. How come it's, none of that has been on the map? Is that just because this is primarily just for discussion?
Yeah, this is just, you can think of this as a bubble drawing that the Waymark folks put together. It's got some, you know, some loose exhibit in terms of trails here. I think, and I'll look over here to our Waymark representative, this is the existing road that leads up to the quarry. Is that correct? No?
A portion. It leads to the corner that you see up top. So it's bending around for a longer sightline.
Got it. So a little bit of background on this. So a previous potential developer had looked at this and had shared some plans with the city, not Waymark, but a different developer. Our traffic engineer looked at it and concluded at that time that likely the best access here, and this is, the map's turned so that south is over here, so the marsh is over to the right. So here's Cordelia Road here, as it winds around the hill. Traffic engineer concluded, that's the city's traffic engineer, the best access was likely from this point here and wrapping around this way. So most likely, the steeper area here is not where the city would ultimately support that access if this is included in our general plan. Now, there was also the need for other access points for fire and emergency exiting, you know, most likely off of the backside over here. You've got some existing access over here. So the main road would be most likely from this point right there.
So if we put this into consideration, we would get better typography, mapping of these things?
So...
Yes.
Yes, I want to make sure that just, this is highly conceptual. And we're just using these as, you know, example images of the types of things that we could plan for. And so, you know, to Councilman Tonnison's question about, you know, in terms of engaging with the general plan committee, we've sort of been, you know, in a holding pattern, because we're looking for sort of these big-picture vision, sort of like, hey, this is where the council wants to see this stuff go. Then next is really a lot of that policy development, where it gets much more into the weeds, so to speak, in terms of identifying, okay, if we were going to look at this, what types of policies on land use would there have to be in order for the general plan to kind of hone in more on the types of uses that would be allowed in these areas? So generally speaking, I think what we're asking for is, you know, does council, are you open to seeing housing on Nelson Hill? And looking at that as is currently contemplated? If so, then there's more analytical work that needs to go into that.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, if we agree to, for instance, keep this and just keep it in the general plan, does that mean that it's going to happen? I mean, I know, being here for a long time, it seems like 1,500 years now, that we turn things down all the time that are, you know...
Well, you can direct us both ways. You can direct us to study, you know, it be studied more. Or you can direct and say, yeah, we can look at it. If you can give us two access points, make sure there is public, open-space access and all that is provided for. So if they can't come up with two ways to get in and out, then it's not going to go, you know? So you can give us directions, saying, condition on this, this, and this. We can allow it to go through. Or you can turn it down. I mean, it's your call, yeah?
Yeah, so our existing general plan includes a range of, you know, development policies should Nelson Hill get developed. We would come back with, you know, having listened to the council, some of the concerns, listening to the community. Should the council say, yes, we are supportive of housing being developed up here, we would come back with a collection of additional policy recommendations for you to consider for how this could happen in a way that would make you comfortable.
So right now, how is it described in our general plan?
So right now, it's identified as a special study area. It's shown within our urban limit line. And so the general plan is very clear that the city is supportive of considering bringing this into the city for residential development in a manner very similar to what you see up here, preservation of the outside hill, having a public access and viewpoint up on the top, putting some trails on there. So the kinds of things that you're seeing here are generally consistent with what our existing general plan has shown since at least 1992 for this area. But ultimately, because this is, you know, some of these sites that we're looking at, some of these 11 sites, most of them are actually in the city. A few of them are outside the city. This one is outside the city. So, you know, we're not the only decision-maker here. Ultimately, Lafco would have to authorize the annexation.
And we would update the policies. I mean, that fire management is more of a concern today than it used to be 20 years ago. Then we'll call for a fire management plan to be produced, removal of, you know, non-native species from there, and all of that stuff, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
But again, today, we're mostly looking at the high level. Are you supportive of the idea of housing, something generally in this configuration or not? Direction to move forward to the next step and look at more detailed policies? Or if you're not supportive, you know, we're looking to hear that as well.
Does this council have to make this decision now? Or could we send it to the committees to look at it first and bring it back? To get more input from them? They were supposed to be doing some of this.
Yeah, so, you know, these were included in, when we went to the committees in the fall of 2021, Nelson Hill was included. So they did see that and have the ability to comment on that. So this isn't something new for them? I don't recall if they gave specific... What they did was, yeah, and actually, yeah, we might be able to look here. They gave, and again, there were three alternative visions for Cordelia that were presented that had different concepts for Nelson Hill. And I think we can, she'll pull up what the committee said.
Okay. Yeah, Councilwoman Vaccaro?
Sorry. I thought my principal voice could be kind of low. Yeah, so if we decide to not, or just to hold off on this tonight, I mean, that doesn't make a difference, right? I mean, it can come back to us. Just following up on what the mayor said, that maybe we need more information.
So, I mean, ultimately, yes. It's totally up to the council.
Right.
You know, we are now going into our almost third year of this. And what we're looking for is sort of these broad direction. Because until we have that, then the next steps in the process of doing the analysis and starting to look at policy development that really is the bulk of what the general plan process is, the general plan update, we can't even get there. And so, you know, if council wants to direct us to, you know, go back to the committee or, you know, postpone any further conversation on this, then certainly that's your prerogative, and we'll take whatever direction. What we were hoping tonight really was to sort of, in these areas, these are the last areas we're looking for direction on, right? The vast majority of the rest of the city, the council made fairly, you know, quick and decisive decisions on what you wanted to see, North Texas, around the mall, you know, the west side of town, those areas.
Councilman Vaccaro, did you have anything else to say there? No?
I understand what you're saying. I do. You know, we do have to move on. So if we kept it in the plan, like the mayor had said, that doesn't necessarily mean it's an end, you know, the end game there. Just there's other things that have to come back to us.
That's correct.
All right.
We're not approving housing tonight.
Correct.
By any long shot or even annexing or not.
Correct. And like I say, our existing general plan shows it as a special study area with a set of policies that have to be addressed in order for the city to support it. You could direct that it continue as a special study area with policies. But with the guidance that, I mean, the idea is that the study area would be to study it for, you know, a collection of open space and housing, something consistent with what you see up here.
Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you. I'm okay with keeping it in. But if we can request how we were asking regards, because I know a lot of the issues around the concern of access, if we could just show different access points with regards to if there was a fire or an emergency?
Yes.
So more specific there. How does everybody else feel about that?
I'm in agreement with it as well.
If you're keeping it in, we're keeping it in. But, I mean, we would be getting into the weeds, but 450 houses on that hill is not something that I... Yeah, I myself would hold off. You guys can outvote me.
It looks like... How about you, Councilwoman?
I echo the concern surrounding access. When I think of 450 houses there, and they just have that one area to get out. And by the way, I did take, I guess the road was open. And we helped ourselves to go look up there. And it is absolutely a beautiful view, stunning. I love the open space that's around there, like the trails that people in the community can go and walk. So, you know, so there are some high points to this. But my concerns is absolutely the access. The concerns surrounding fire, I don't, that's the first I've heard of it. And of course, that lends a concern. I don't want Waymark to be the one giving us feedback about fire and stuff. I want that to be us. And then the other thing is that I wanted to mention... I lost my train of thought. Give me a second. Open space. Oh, so also, I want to make sure that we're considering... I'm trying to say this without being, saying this correctly. So, you know, for me, I don't know if I want to live in a crater. But maybe that's the thing. Maybe that's really good. If that, if it doesn't pin, does that somehow come back to us where, oh, it's 450 is what we've pinned for, but we only got 100 people living here? Like, does that somehow blow back on us in any way?
I'm not sure I understand the question. You mean, will they come for us? You're darn tootin', you know what? The voters always come for us. Is that what you meant?
No. Does it have a negative impact on the city at all? If they're not able to make this develop the way it should? Okay.
No. No, that's ultimately, that's on them.
Councilman Tonnison?
So I just, I've never done a general plan before. So this is all new to us. The county is standing up, saying, no, 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 and no. How do we move something into discussions when the county is pretty much saying, I don't know how this works? So...
That friction has been there since the county and the city existed.
But wasn't my, I'm kind of asking, I guess, the city manager, what are, how do you do that? I mean, how do you, when we say we want to annex all these different areas into town, the county says, no. What do we do?
So our interests may not always be aligned. The Lafco is an independent body. And so, you know, that's where you have the opportunity to study these things. But it doesn't mean necessarily that they get approved in terms of an annexation or expansion of a sphere.
If they disapprove, it can still happen?
Yeah, I mean, so Lafco, and Dave can correct me how though, Solano County Lafco, what their, you know, criteria is. But typically, they have criteria that specifies it needs to be contiguous in terms of urban... And I don't know what the Solano rules are. But it needs to typically be contiguous that there are city services that can be provided. There has to be a study that needs to be done to make sure that the annexation will follow all of the criteria laid out by Lafco. There may be a full EIR that may need to be done, an annexation EIR, specific to that project, to make sure it fulfills all of the criteria they have in mind. So there are a bunch of hoops to cross to get to a stage before it's going to get approved. But before they can do that, they need the city general plan to say the city would even be interested in that to begin with. Otherwise, why would the Lafco even think about that?
Okay, so that's more of a relationship-building thing? Because I would rather have their blessing and have discussions with them.
And I don't think, sitting here today, we are saying that if you're proceeding with housing in here, then it's 450 housing units. I, you know, that's not what we are saying at all here. I think it'll have to be studied further in terms of access requirements. How many cars can maybe flow through those to exist? And all of that will have to be done. But we need some kind of a direction. Is it okay to at least proceed with those, keeping in mind it may come into, you know, within the general plan as opposed to just remaining a study area forever? Because if it remains a study area, they cannot proceed with it and start doing the more detailed studies. But if the city puts the stamp and say, fine, if you can give us the open space, give us the trails, have two ways of getting in and out, have visually thought it'd be impacting, and you can design it with all of that, yeah, we could maybe live with that, you know? And then they have, they say, okay, well, at least we are sort of there. Now let's do more detailed studies and prepare a real plan that's, you know, better than that. And let's do the annexation studies, and let's do all that. Put it to Lafco and see how Lafco reacts to that. Lafco may still turn it down. But that's the risk they will have to take to undertake those studies, yeah?
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out here. So can you just put your thumb up? If you want to keep this part of the general plan? Okay, so that's the majority of us.
And Madam Mayor, to be clear, for the minutes, are we still talking about seven?
Yes. That's all. All right. Next. You know what? I'm going to take a 10-minute break. Yeah.
Direction on these other property owner requests and whether we want to consider them in the general plan, or as I think a couple have said, we could send it back to our other people and our committees and ask them to look at it, or we could just say no.
Like we did to six?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to offer, just, oh, forgive me for interrupting.
Yeah.
Just some, what we're really looking for this evening is high level direction for these sites, what do you want to see happen on them? And we are going to come back later with more detailed policies, you know, honing in on what that density might look like if housing is on the table, but really it's just the high level, what do you want to see happen on these sites in the future?
So can I make a suggestion?
Three and seven require annexation and the other properties are within city limits, just to clarify that, yeah.
So if I can make a suggestion, we did six and seven, let's just burn through them one at a time.
Okay, let's.
Does that make sense to say that we're going to have a high level discussion, we can just burn through this?
Yeah.
So just a quick clarifying question on number six, we said a lifestyle center, but we didn't specifically discuss housing, is housing okay as part of a lifestyle center?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so what about the others?
Site one, while we heard there was, you know, some questions about whether housing should be allowed here, could we please confirm direction on that and also expansion of the dairy?
I have one question on site one, that also is where, is that where the grocery store, the site three?
No, that's south of that, yeah.
Yes.
That's just south, well, that's, I mean, it's south of that, right over here, correct?
That's right, the grocery area is right here.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a problem with the dairy expanding there, I don't have any problem with that at all, I don't know about 40 units, that stuff's pretty rough back there.
Not very many houses, though.
It isn't 40 houses, not many houses.
I think, I like number one.
All right.
Oh.
Oh. Oh, councilwoman?
I don't want to get in front.
Sorry.
So one, I don't mind changing, one is only 40 units, I like that we're getting in front of looking at, you know, Caltrans, building that extension of road there. For me, one is a yes for those reasons.
Okay.
I second that.
And it looks like there's a majority here.
Fantastic.
So we'll go ahead with that, let's move on to the next.
Okay, next are sites two and three, there are some environmental constraints on this site, but also, you know, what is your vision for this area? This would require annexation.
It would require annexation.
That's right.
Yes, please, councilwoman.
So my question about this one, is this the property where that highway?
That's where the roundabouts at, isn't it?
The new highway would go right through there, right? Right between two and three?
Mm-hmm.
And then, there would be another exit to 80? Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, what we show on the screen right now, where you can see where that roadway connects between Business Center Drive and Highway 12, basically that runs through this properties two and three that we're identifying.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and just to reiterate, there are some environmental constraints on this site, there is a fault line that runs underneath it, and also some steep slopes.
Is that where the roundabouts out, out and back, Alpha Balance, out and by, back at Costco?
It's a little further down from there, but yes.
Yeah, I just don't see it.
Allison, if we can go back to that other, there you go, yeah, so the yellows there, you can see where Business Center ends, right there, yes, that's the roundabout that Councilman Tonason's referring to, and that's where, from there, the road would extend up and over through that hill and down into Red Top Road.
Into 680.
Yeah, into 80.
So, the dark areas, is that like wetlands?
The dark areas are trees and elevation.
Oh, elevation.
It's pretty steep in there.
Yeah, it is.
And just to also repeat, staff had made these estimations based on environmental constraints, so that number is, does take that into account.
Let's take a better look at three, I don't know.
That's the Dittmer property, so it's all surrounded by all rez, right, all rez abuts it?
That's right, up here is residential.
You know, that seems to be flowing, it seems to be showing, you know, you're going into a residential area, you're throwing more residential in there, if it can stop, how many units is that?
One to 200.
Yep, so two and three combined, it's a range of 275 to 550, but this is almost 580 acres.
580 acres?
580 acres.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
And I want to.
It's the hillside, isn't it?
Yeah, and I want to remind ourselves also, at the last meeting we had, or the meeting before that, we had talked about potentially a park at the site, obviously the park is not going to be 580 acres, but it could be part and parcel of any housing that's developed, and the park could potentially be located on the east side of this facility, so it's more accessible centrally to not just this development, but other neighbors in that area who have asked for additional park wreck facilities in that area.
It would be good for a park up into there.
So we could require a neighborhood park, is that what we're saying?
A bigger park than neighborhood.
Like more like a community park that's bigger sized than, could be 40 acres or something like that, is what we think of a community park, yeah.
And that would protect these hilly areas?
I don't know if it's necessarily that it would protect it, but as a part of the planning, right, so once we sort of know what the overall vision is in terms of rooftops, so, you know, how many residential, how much commercial, then that allows them to start kind of doing the analysis on, all right, now how much parkland is required, and as you then start to site locate where that parkland might go, this is a very, you know, highly plausible location with some of that residential because of the location, the proximity to existing residential that may need more park access that we've heard from folks and residents, and then that additional transportation infrastructure, as that gets developed, then that makes it much more easily accessible from, you know, multiple directions in Cordelia.
Right, and the entire park doesn't need to be flat, I mean, there could be play fields or tennis courts out there that may need to be on flat land, but you could also have trails and be more natural and still be part of public parkland, yeah.
Yeah, I drove that area, if we're taking motions, now I'd motion that we could go ahead and look at doing that one for.
All right.
Second.
Second, okay, okay. What do we got, who wants to agree with that? I'm good, okay, you've got a majority, there you go.
Great, we've talked about six, direction to, in line with staff, recommendation lifestyle center with mixed use.
With housing.
With housing. Nelson Hill study area, and then we have 10 and 11, so site 10 is currently zoned as industrial business park, site 11 is office commercial.
I personally struggle with that one a little bit, because you've got the industrial that's right across from it, I would be in favor of leaving those as they are.
I would like to see 11 taken out of office commercial, I think, I think that we have too much office space right now in this city, we don't have, it's too much, people are working from home now, I could see something else.
Isn't it business industrial?
Site 10.
11's office. I agree with.
Okay, if 11's office, yeah, I'd get behind that.
Yeah, I'd get behind that.
Yeah.
But 10, leave it alone.
And what would you like to see in place of that, would it be housing or would it be industrial, you know?
11, yeah.
Maybe more industrial.
To match 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd get behind industrial, too.
Yeah.
But I do have a question about industrial.
Yes.
Is industrial still, well, so.
Or light industrial?
So that's still viable, that is needed, that is in demand, yeah, I think that should, it makes sense that industrial kind of stays together.
And I have a question as well, and isn't that, those spots where the on-ramp starts on the new developer?
Yeah, it's right to the north of that, you know, the site, it's going to go up from there, yeah.
Yeah, see, site two, yeah.
I'll second that if that was a motion, Doug.
Okay, there we go, we got a majority that says go with that.
Awesome.
All right, and then last, last of our sites is site 12, where the property owner is requesting a down zoning, and just want to reiterate that this is a site that is already in the housing element as a pipeline site, it was approved at 378 units that would allow multifamily development, so.
Was that Haven Hill, was that the apartment complex?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, it's already residential, I'd be fine with residential.
Second.
Yep, I'm good with it.
And would we retain the existing, yeah, the question is, do we downzone or keep the current housing, the current zoning, which is high density residential?
They want to build fewer housing units, they don't have to build a multi apartment building.
Fewer housing units?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, I just want to make sure you understand, so right now it's high density, and they're wanting to make it lower.
Lower density, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we have it at higher density in the housing element.
Want it low.
Which means that, not tomorrow, because we have a buffer, remember, in the housing element that you adopted, once we get closer to eating up the buffer, maybe a few years down the road, if similar situations happen, then they may need to come back and upzone some other sites to a higher density.
You mean for arena?
For arena, yeah, not today.
Or arena can.
This will not cause it to tip over, yeah.
All right.
I did just want to note that this is the only remaining site in Cordelia that has this zoning designation for high density residential.
Were you making a suggestion there?
In South Cordelia.
Are you just pointing that, I mean?
Just putting it out.
Okay.
Down zoning means less traffic, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, so now that we've talked about housing, we're moving into our employment uses to create that jobs housing balance, and the questions here are, what types of employment uses would you want to see along Business Center Drive? Is there room for warehousing, or would you want to see that elsewhere?
I'm sick of warehousing.
More warehousing.
No more warehousing.
And then.
I think there's a clear consensus, no warehouses.
No more warehousing.
Okay, no warehousing, but I think you're good with the palette of images that you showed.
Right, do these uses kind of jibe with your vision, we have, you know, food and beverage, flex space.
Right, okay, I'm seeing nodding heads with that.
Yes, food and beverage.
I like the word flex space.
Yeah.
Then the last question here, Allison, if you could sort of repeat that, is the place for housing, there's a drawing that you had that showed the hatch areas.
Yep.
So what we are recommending here is that, you see the hatch, the black hatch lines go over the purple areas out there, that those areas may be appropriate for housing, they're a little further removed from the freeway, but it would be like a conditional use, so they'll need to come back to the city either at a staff level or to the city council, depending on how we set it up, in order to approve housing, but housing would be okay in those areas that are hatched out there, in addition to the business uses, yeah.
I don't know why you would do that, I mean.
You would just preserve the entire area for business uses?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
For that Business Center Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think some of the areas that are already residential should stay residential, though.
Yeah, those would stay residential, I think the question we're asking is, in this area.
For identity, like housing, yeah.
Yeah, in this area where you're identifying more of this mixed use, commercial, you know, flex space type of use, flex space, then where they're showing on hatch marks, do you want to leave some avenue for some form of housing, to where there's, it's not just allowed by right, but would require, you know, any.
It may be a use permit, but not a general plan amendment, in other words, we would set it up where, and you have previously approved the housing development right in that area where the left, where the lower hatch mark is, so it could be a mixed area, you know, under certain conditions, if you're not right next to another use industrial that is polluting and so on, in those cases you're allowed to do residential, but not otherwise, yeah, but in those limited areas only, we'd keep the rest as business only.
Okay, councilwoman, oh, go ahead, councilwoman?
So for me, this is the area that I haven't done a lot of processing about, so of course, I'm very familiar with Business Center Drive, but I just haven't spent that time obsessing about it and really thinking through this, this changeover, and so, but let me kind of give you where my head is, so, A, we, I want to make sure that if we're changing this over, we have the infrastructure to support it, so that's a concern, another concern is, I want to make sure that the direction we're going supports where industry is going, so if there's a lot of office space there, and we're no longer, you know, doing a lot of office space, and we don't see that business coming back, I want to be sensitive to that, you know, because this is 20 years out, also, before we consider more housing, you know, I want to make sure that we're thinking about other areas that we want to make sure we're pushing housing out, so if we're kind of holding space here, does that force, you know, development in other areas where we want to see some change, maybe downtown or what have you, so I just, for me, I need more time talking about it, thinking about it, talking to community development, and really putting my, putting my brain around it some more.
Okay, does anybody else feel that way, or are you all ready to move on this, or do you want to get a little more time?
I'm okay, as long as we have the housing conditionally permitted, then I'm good with that.
Councilwoman?
Can I make a comment, I mean, for me, being that we're so close to the college, I understand that the red and green, or the red and, I'm sorry, red and orange, sorry, are specifically for what we talked about earlier, but I would want to see, because we are so close to the college, to make sure that we are leaving, you know, space for more incubator space, more innovation, more, because we need to take advantage of, we have the college right there, and then, I know that there was just a building just bought for something, you know, an innovation center, but I think that we need to be mindful of, you know, the future and where technology is going, where biotech is going, so we have the space to the, so that we can also accommodate those industries in the future, being that the college is right there.
So councilwoman, if I understand you, you would take it, the hatch off of the northern area or the northeastern area that's right next to the college, but maybe leave it in the other portion, right?
I could be, I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Vucaro is okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay, majority of us are okay with that.
Okay, good, okay.
And then I did just want to make one final clarification, along Business Center Drive, there was a commenter who was requesting a property change, or a zoning change to his property.
To light industrial on 5253.
That's right, yes, it is in this black outline right here, and a change to industrial would, you know, as it exists now, include warehousing, can I get confirmation that the no warehousing direction would also apply to this site?
I'm good with that, going to light industrial, so we can move, move ahead.
It'll be the same palette of uses we'll be applying elsewhere in Business Park Drive, right?
Yeah.
Meaning no warehouse.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, I want to make sure and clarify, I just heard you all, you know, very, very sternly say no warehousing, light industrial under current zoning, and now we could come up, I guess, with policy language surrounding that location, but that would otherwise conditionally allow warehousing.
Well, I think that we should come up with policy language for that, so we don't have just plain warehousing, it has to be manufacturing and not just hauling stuff in and out of there around, you know.
Okay, so no warehousing in that, on that site, and we look at to see to what extent either it's the business mixed use or some other designation that will make sure that it's the palette of uses we talked about, but not warehousing.
Is that the 5230?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. It's where the two buildings are at?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the one in the back, didn't it just get rented out?
I think it was the one in the front.
It was the one in the front, so that's a tricky property, I don't want to see trucks going in there, so yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't get behind warehousing on that.
Me neither, I do not want to see trucks going through there at all.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then finally is our direction on our Sassoon Valley study areas. Councilman Vucaro?
Yeah, I wanted to just say, the two people that spoke, I believe, Lisa Howard and Mr. Leland back there, I agree that I think the city and the county does, and, you know, need to work together on this, you know, this is really important, you know, before we, I think the Sassoon Valley area is so, I mean, you know, my wife grew up out there, I mean, I know how important it is to everybody, that's why we have to, we have to work with the county on this, and with the Witners and other, and, you know, the farmers out there, to make sure we're doing the right thing, so I don't know what the next steps would be with this, I mean, I think probably some type of committee, I don't know, you've mentioned that before, mayor.
We've already voted on that.
I don't know if this is what you guys have in mind, for like a committee between the city, am I right? Okay, and I have a question, Mr. Leland, you mentioned these grandiose plans, you know, coming to the valley, can you enlighten us a little bit on what you were talking about? Is that okay?
Sure.
About to reopen the public hearing or anything?
I'll try to be quick.
Yeah, just, you know, it just kind of caught my, when you said that, I just, I said, okay, let's, let's hear it, so.
So, so over the last 30 years or so, the retail wine industry has changed a lot and become a major tourism activity, and so that people are, as tourists, going to wine regions around the country, around the world, wanting to stay for more than a day and have things to do, including tasting wine made locally, but they also want to find good food, they want higher end hotel accommodations than you currently see along Business Center, that's more TOT, by the way, they want some lifestyle retail in the area, so that's a good call you made on the Garavenda property, so is the four-story hotel he wants to build, so there's a lot of tourism products that end up going into regions, you already see that, if you go up to Sonoma or Napa, if you go down to San Luis or Lodi or Paso, that's coming to Sassoon Valley, not on the scale as those other places, because the valley's not as large, but we are studying actively, the county allows small lodging in the unincorporated area with wineries, so we're studying that, and I think the future's bright for that tourist aspect, which supports the agriculture, because for the grape growers to be successful, there need to be wineries in the valley making fine wines that customers want to buy, the valley a long time ago was just growing grapes for other wineries in Napa, and that's a commodity business, now the grape value has gone up significantly in the last few years out there, which is a good thing, so that's what we have in mind, we're aware of people who have optioned property out there to do these very things, I can't disclose who they are yet, but.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, yeah, I just think that it's, like I said earlier, it's very important that we work together on this, because if we don't, it's not going to, you know, I just don't feel it's going to end up the right way.
I agree with you, councilman, as you know, we all voted already to create the committee, the city manager and I are working on that, also with the county, and then we'll bring it back and we'll decide how that's, you know, exactly who's going to sit there and all of that, I want to say this, a few things, we talked about trust tonight, and that's two ways, we don't need to be dictated about what's done, my family has been out and working literally with their hands in the dirt out there for 100 years ago, and my husband and I, or our family, has had land in Sassoon Valley for that time, we've been around for a while, we know what it takes, and I'll tell you that Caemus can afford to put in whatever they want to, there are other people like Derek Lum and others who say that they do need city resources out there, they need water, and they, and they need, they need our sewer, in fact, I think our sewer district's going to be looking at that very soon, we need to work together to make sure that that valley is not touched as far as any kind of a housing out there, period, it is, as my father-in-law always said, God's country, and I believe that, and I love that dirt, I'll be buried in that dirt, along with my husband, and, sorry, it's a little emotional for me, which is why I pushed so hard when I was running for mayor to make sure that we were putting together a committee so that we always listen to each other, because you're right, Councilman Vucaro, if we don't do this, we could screw it up forever, now, most people don't have the money that the Caemus does, and you, Mr. Leland, work for them, and I love your plans, you and I have talked about them and seen them, they're beautiful, and there are smaller places out there that want to do other things, and there are other big wineries, and yes, we need hotels out there that are boutique, and Fairfield, as I've said, needs to make sure, just like you mentioned tonight, to work with that, to make sure that we are building the hotels right into downtown, where we'll have the fine dining that we have talked about, Mr. Leland, you and I, as well as what's going on already out in the valley where you can get fine dining now, so I agree with you 100% councilman, I think that we should just go back and, well, not go back, city manager and I have already been working on, you know, doing what you directed us to do, and that was to put that committee together.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make one more statement, you know, when I think about, you know, developing or, you know, businesses coming to Sassoon Valley, I taught a class in equity a couple of years ago at Torre University, and in education, there's, we talk about equity all the time, equity for the kids, equity for the parents, and I think there's equity for business, too, and we have to look at that.
Yes.
We really do.
Yes.
Because there's people out there that, you know, take, and I, you know, I mentioned my wife's family, you know, first generation American, you know, parents were both immigrants, worked out there in the valley, I mean, you know, people out there that haven't been there as long, they still need the right, they still need the same, the same things that, you know, that other people have out there, I think it's just, and for some reason, every time I think of the word equity, I think about, you know, businesses that, or, you know, small businesses that don't get the opportunity that they need because of who they are, or what they look like, things like that, and that really bothers me, so that's, that's an issue that I really want to see addressed whenever we do any kind of plan.
I 100% agree with you, and that's what I was talking about, most people are not going to have the resources that Caemus has, and so if you have somebody who, you know, has a little five acres or fewer, you know, what can we do to help them, and the bottom line is that, I sit on the Sona County Water Agency, and the God's truth is that the water under Sassoon Valley is not going to last, it's not built like that, the, I looked at the studies, the most recent studies, I've talked to the water experts, including a lot of them now, and Sassoon Valley cannot build out with the water that's underneath there, so it's going to have to come from somewhere, and so that's what we're here for, or Vale, or anybody else, but we're going to need to have that, but with assurances that it'll never. But we're gonna need to have that, but with assurances that it'll never, it'll never, however we do that with layovers, with, with pinky swearing or with whatever, that we never, ever think about putting any housing in there. That's not what it's for. And, uh, so that's what I have to say about. I know you've heard me talk about this a lot before. Anybody else on that? Yes, Councilman?
I have a couple of questions on the two, three, four, um, possible annexations. And I know that with grapes, there's a lot of different soils. And from, um, city manager, perhaps you can help me with this? Like, um, I know that some of these sites, such as three, four, and I think one and two, the soil isn't what it should be for, um, good, fine wine. That, is that correct?
Uh, I, I don't know if I can speak to that. I'm, I'm certainly not a fine wine maker, kind of a cheap wine maker. I, I have heard, um, that, uh, site one has, um, some soil issues. Uh, we've not explored four specifically. And three, I, I don't know if that's included in the, in the ag zone, um, prime ag maps. I see, um, is she pulling it up? But, um, so I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. And a- as far as it goes as site three, um, I've, I've been around a long time as well. Um, I've even worked at Anheuser-Busch. Um, that site doesn't seem to be real productive with, um, fruit. I think the only thing that I've seen there in many years is, is hay and grass. Do you know if there's anything else that they cultivate or want to use? Site three, four, as far as ag?
Uh, n- no. I don't know specifically. Um, that is, uh, a part of the site that the gentleman from Buzz Oats, where, where they have, um, property there. And that's a site that, uh, the property owner has expressed interest to us in terms of, uh, annexation.
And, and again, to further the conversation on site three, the, the Sassoon Valley i- is currently going to be in need of an industrial echo si- uh, a site that we can use that is easy access to freeways and also can, can process the wine in industrial agricultural, industrial area, which we currently don't have and possibly are gonna need in the future. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. So when we met with, um, Ms. Howard and Mr. Leland, uh, last week and, and talked about, you know, the options that could be looked at at that site, you know, we talked about policies that would be very specific to, um, you know, processing facilities, custom crush facilities, uh, that, I, I forget what, they're like custom filling, um, you know, tho- those types of facilities that would support sort of the up-valley, um, uses. Um, and I think that's where sort of that option two of, you know, continuing to work with them to identify what those types of uses might be and how we're working together with the county in order to fulfill that vision is, is, you know, sort of continues down the path of those conversations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else, you all? Councilman Thomas said no? Councilman, Councilwoman?
I think that you, you guys have said it all tonight. I mean, I don't have any...
Okay.
Not that I would even vote on, you know, it's in the county, but I, I certainly wouldn't be supportive of any residential being put in the valley. But this site three, I think, is gonna be a benefit to, to the city and to the other operations that are around that. So I don't, I don't know what the trust issue is. I, I don't think I've ever talked about three. But I would be willing to support option six for staff's recommendation.
And I would second that.
And had fingers up if you support that? All right, you got a majority there. So that would be, uh, number six, recommendation to keep study area three.
The, the one caveat I would request to that is it's, is in addition to two, right? I want to continue to, to meet and collaborate and have those conversations.